America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I will start by taking the roll call. Janet Dykis.
Present.
Tim West.
Present.
Joe Patrowski.
Here.
I'm also here, and I am expecting Kelly for getting here. A new justice to the agenda.
Yes, we need to, we're gonna delete motion five point one. It's a motion to elect Matthew Brier. Yes, I'll go with that next one.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winter of School Committee meeting of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and special meeting of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one is written or with corrections.
Second.
We've seconded discussion.
The good is for women.
Stuck in right now. I see, and I will call the vote, all those are favor. Vote passes for disapproval. Superintendent report.
Okay, I sent my report up earlier. I just want to, just wanna talk about what we were just talking about. Our next meeting is August fourth, and that's good timing as far as I'm concerned. You may recall, one of the meetings in June, you postponed on back-to-school decisions until August. So, we have our administrative team retreat scheduled three days, but two days off-site, and then if we need a third day, it'll be back here. But that'll be August third and fourth. So, I've extended this offer to Sue, but I should extend it to you, to all of you. If you wanna come be a part of any of the retreat, you're welcome to be, but particularly, I believe, on the third, the first day, we're gonna have the conversation about back-to-school in-depth with the administrative team. I have to be honest with you, I don't suspect that we'd have a lot of detailed things for you to vote on, because as of right now, it's still pretty, we have to have some contingencies, and I don't know how much we wanna get involved in the contingencies right now until we have to. And I only say that because I feel like we put together a very thorough plan last year, and for me, the contingency would be to go back to what we already set up. But we're, you know, I think five days a week is what we're gonna recommend. We've already sent that out to the community. And the only masking that I'm sort of, I've been slowly backing away from the three things I said before, and looking at masking on the buses for all people. There's a couple of other things that need to be in there that we're gonna be asked to look at. Vaccinated versus unvaccinated with respect to using the building after school, or groups using the building after school. Community involvement in, or presence in the building during the day, those types of conversations need to happen. But my point is, it'll be the third, and the third that we'll have that conversation. We're gonna have our administrative retreat at U M F. So, if anybody's interested in joining us, you are welcome to be there, as I said to Sue. I will send you the entire two-day agenda. If you really have no life, I mean, if you have nothing better to do, and wanna come hang out with us for two days, then that'll be fine. Glad to have you. So, in my report, I wrote, "Most of the hiring is done." I also need to add to my, pardon, my reporting tonight to tell you that two of our candidates that we thought we had in the fold have chosen not to take positions. I already mentioned that Matt Greer was on the agenda tonight, he elected for middle school math-science position. He has withdrawn. He's accepted another position in another district. And the other one is our guidance council, who was approved last meeting, a couple meetings ago. She did tell me, she was very honest. She came here from Texas, she was up in the county area at the time, and was concerned about finding housing. She said she made a couple of attempts to come down here and didn't find housing, so she's opted to return to Texas, which is where she came from. So, we are now two more people short, but, so we're beginning the process of, well, re-advertising and going through the process of hiring those people, following leads, and twisting people's arms, whatever, to get them to apply. So, anyway. So, I'll answer any of the questions you have with respect to my report. And I do want to go through the appointments. James Marazek, I think is how you say his name, he is returning to us. He was a former ed tech here. And then Jacob Luce, so James will be at the high school, and Jacob Luce will be at the grade school. I sent you out a list of fall coaches, happy to ask, or I'm here, I can do it, or Joel can do it, he's here, answer any questions about that. Resignation to Dylan Veugh, our computer technician, which I'm particularly sad about. And, yeah, that's it. If you have questions, I mean.
Questions? Okay, for my chair report, I'll start by saying I'm glad for the appointments, and good luck to Dylan. And I have a couple things I'd like to say. First of all, thank you to Don Beatty for the book that he gave each of us. It was a nice little surprise. Also, there's an upcoming webinar for you all on the committee via MSBA with Dr. Shaw. I don't know if you guys got to see that on your emails yet, but it's on Thursday, July twenty-ninth, at eight o'clock. It's for school and district leaders and school nurses, and they're gonna be talking about the U.S. CDC guidelines, the D H H S requirement for reporting vaccination rates in schools, masking, transportation, he's going to be covering all of those topics. I'm gonna try really hard to be on that webinar, so if you can't, I'll try to record it out on it on the fourth.
Is that at eight a.m.?
Yep, it's a webinar.
Eight a.m.
Yeah, eight a.m. Did you have another question, Joe?
No, I think I'm gonna be on, well, I know, I know I'm gonna be on the channel.
Okay.
I'm in Los, so, I don't know, but can I, can I get it through my tablet or something?
You should be able to.
Yeah, they're gonna, so it's through MSBA, so you get their emails, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think they're going to be sending out additional information via email that will outline how to access it.
And I did, I do probably haven't seen it, but I did send it to you today, so.
Yeah, I just. Yeah.
But like I said, I'm gonna try really hard to be on that, so if you can't be, let me know, and I can send you a little summary.
I'll try, just.
Okay. Yeah. Same with you guys.
I'm gonna try and be there.
Yeah.
And I'll see why I shouldn't be there.
Okay.
Or get my tablet.
That's the key. All right, and then also, just a heads-up that they're starting to send out emails about the Fall Conference, which will be in October, the twentieth and twenty-ninth. It is during the day. It will be virtual, though, so just kinda think about that if you want to attend one or both days, just let me know, because we can register you. And then, in conjunction with that, we need to elect a delegate at some point to be part of the assembly. And I know Joe's done that for us in the past, kinda hoping he'll do it again.
Can I nominate Joe?
Not now.
No, 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 just.
You let me know when I can, because I'm on it.
Yeah, so I'm just giving everybody a heads-up about that. And that is it for me.
I don't know if I told you this last year, but I think I did. You know, they scheduled basically two and a half hours for the leadership conference. After seven hours, they're still at it.
Yeah, oh, and I did.
They had so many fights going on about every resolution, and they amended, and it was just, it was interesting from the standpoint that I, I was in and out most of that seven hours, but I, I just was glad to see people speaking out, but it's a virtual conference, you're not sitting next to your neighbor, you don't talk, you're out there wherever you are, your room, or your school, or work, it was interesting.
So, anyway, just a heads-up about those two things, but I also did wanna thank the town council for passing our proposal to increase the stipends for our committee members, so I really wanna thank you for that, for all the support all have given us. Okay, now I'm onto committee reports. Can I next?
I do have some. We, Kelly and I completed twenty-three A, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five A for general.
Can you whistle?
Yeah, and all you need is email these to calling.
Thank you. They emailed to me.
Okay. S and P, eleven and twelve, and payroll, twenty-four B, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six A, and we do have some want to finish up in there, so hopefully this next week we'll get that done.
And that will close out.
Hopefully, yes, yeah. Some of our, like payroll should be closed out, we have one more general warrant, and I think school nutrition should be closed out, unless they had, like, additional As and Bs that they have to add.
It may be, maybe a little bit unusual this year, I mean, those, food service and payroll definitely closed out, but the others with the delay in deliveries and those, some of the stuff will go back to S R funds, and it will be credited back to, not credited, it'll be sent back to F Y twenty-one.
Okay.
So, that's why before I was talking about, we're not going to have no end-of-year balance for a while.
Right.
Because it's, it's got a little more open this year than it has been in the past.
So, as far as policy, we did not meet this month, but we will start back out next month at our regular time, which is the third Wednesday of.
Of August eighteenth.
August eighteenth, to be exact. Negotiations.
Well, all of you received a copy of the administrator's contract, the new contract, revision of it. I spoke to Jim about it at length, I didn't have a chance to speak with Kelly about it. It's exactly what we had intended to do. The only problem I had was, and Jim was correct in saying this, that I was glad to see he put a range in, is where people might fall if we're negotiating to bring someone into this system as an administrator. So, we do have a range, which is already set up, and we also have to finalize the negotiations. And an amount, I think the amount of salary Jim has already negotiated, but you can't get it completely from what he's set up, and that's for the athletic director, as long as it's gonna be the facilities manager. So, I don't know if you wanna explain that better.
Well, I wanna, I'd like to do it, it seems more appropriate to me to do it, after I make the motion to approve it, then I'll, I'll explain that.
So, I'll make the motion to approve.
It's on the agenda. Anything else for negotiations, or is that it?
No, I think we got, like, a three-year rest now.
No, we don't.
Okay, and nothing for the ad hoc committees?
No.
I would assume not, okay. No administrative reports. And now we are up to Mr. Stoneton with an update on summer projects.
Okay, I'm not sure I wanna do this now, but there's nothing in that position, because I should go.
That's, you misheard that.
I'm just kidding. I'm gonna give you guys a couple things, and it's really a resource in the sense that when, next time we come back and we do administrative reports, this will all be written out for you, or just kinda catching up to some things as I've started this month on this. This is just some dates and some areas, really, just to show you the roofing, you know, I would, this is one, you wanna pop it, or you're just gonna be good.
Was it next to CD, or fast, can you say?
Yeah, yes, it's really good.
I did double-take.
Yeah, this is a young lady.
Yes, she is.
So, basically, what you're looking at right now is the roofing project that's going on right now at the schools. I can walk you through this, but I think you're certainly capable of seeing what is happening, but the main area that I really want you to focus on is that, you know, they've started July twentieth, obviously that's passed, so they're already starting with the roofing and so forth at this point. And Mr. Hartzkin, you please jump in anytime, too, because you've set most of us up, and I'm really just kinda seeing it through at this point. So, a couple things, they started on the gym here at the grade school, and they've updated those things as far as ripping them and starting to attach the shingles and so forth, but the main thing I wanted to communicate to you is that Kids Club is out of that area, that is something that Lonnie knew about ahead of time, there's no conflict with people entering and exiting that area at this, at this time. And then you'll see quickly that in August, that they move on to do the rubber section of the gym, as well as some valleys and some other areas. One thing I'm still trying to get clarification on is the entry right here to the town office is not on this, and Mr. Hartzkin and I met about that, and that's probably one of the worst roofs, and so that may just be something as simple as, it's, it's not a priority at this time, because it's essentially, essentially just a dome or an entryway coming to the building, so it may not be something that's a financial need at this point as far as addressing that, but it's, I mention that just because it's something that you see as soon as you walk down to enter this room here, that it's, the shingles themselves are peeling back and so forth, so. I will say also, too, coming into this project a little bit late, they've been awesome, they've spent a ton of time bringing me up to date, I've met twice with the people, walked around, looked at the buildings, feel very comfortable, and I have a clue that, you know, I think one of the things that this position was created for is to do what I'm doing right now, to let you know what's going on and see that through. And I haven't seen you since then, so thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity, too, because I can tell you, in the first two weeks, I had no idea how he was able to set anything up before. This has been a full-time job for me during the summer, which is not a complaint, it's simply it takes time, and I can't imagine having kids and people in the building right now, because you get, like, three or four things done, and then something takes you somewhere else. So, this is, this has been eye-opening to me, but it's, it's certainly the right decision, not just because I'm standing in front of you, but it's, it is, it's a lot of work, and that's okay. So, anyways, that's, that's kind of where the grade school is at right now. The reason I kinda wanted to just definitely give you this schematic is because for those of you that have seen the, this report, this was something that was put in there to be done. So, as far as strategic plan and so forth, and moving forward through COVID, I think you can actually hang your hat, put a feather in there, that you're still doing those types of things. I think rough estimate, when we talked yesterday, the district is approaching almost a million dollars already, you know, some updates on doing some things around the buildings. So, anyways, I just got that book today, so I didn't even know that was in there, so that's pretty cool. So, moving forward with that, I'll come back to the grade school, I'd just like to go over the roofing things real quick, if that works for you folks. If you go to the next page, you'll see the high school, this is the biggest part of the project, and again, you'll see that all of this will be wrapped up before school starts, so we won't have to worry about folks coming, entering and so forth. These guys contact me on a daily basis and verify through weather and so forth what area they'll be, so I'm able to email out to staff members if necessary to tell them to stay out of certain areas. You'll see that they're starting next week, and they plan to be out of there by August seventh. This is a massive project, the way that they're attacking this is that they're starting here at the grade school, when they bring in the folks to do the rubber here, they're gonna, they're gonna work here at the grade school, and then they'll shift the people doing the shingles up to the high school, which will already have a crew that's starting there next week. So, if you, you get up there, you'll, at some, you might see a smaller crew, but you'll see it grow. So, if you're concerned, because it's, when you really get up on the roof, you can start to understand the magnitude of the project, it's huge, the square footage is really quite large. And then again, they'll be doing the rubber over the, over the gym. We did have the solar panels removed, we did have the brackets removed. Me personally had a little frustration with the, with the group, not gonna lie to you, they came in expecting to be out of there in a couple hours, and they expected to be able to put it on top of our gym roof. I didn't see that that was a possibility, but being new to the job, I called Jeannie, and they said absolutely no way, not only are we replacing it, but it will damage your roof. It cost us another three times as much as what they said it was going to do, and we can have that conversation later. But the frustration for me was, as I said to the foreman directly, before you start this, please call your boss and let me know if there's gonna be a change in price, because I've been around long enough to know simply. And then we got an email out of the blue saying, hey, boom, here's another bill that you're gonna have to pay after the work is already been done, and not just because Jim is standing here in front of me, but I want you to know that he politely said, you pretty much have us over a barrel at this point, so go ahead and continue, but there's not much we can do. Only share that with you, because when this all comes back in my report, you're gonna see that some figures are quite a bit higher than what we expected. Just, just something to be aware of, that's all. Very nice guys, I don't think there was anything malicious about it and so forth, I just don't think that it was thought well through on there.
It wasn't all communicated, I, I know I told them.
Yep.
That they could not put it on the overrise roof initially.
Yep.
And somehow that didn't get communicated.
Right, and that was, you know, it basically went from walking down and putting something down to bringing in a lift, and bringing in three more people, and bringing it down. I understand their costs and so forth, but that wasn't all communicated well, and I certainly think that we should probably take a look at who we use in the future, just gonna go on record for that, just to put that, plant that seed for you, so. And then the last piece is just, yes, sir?
Are the solar panels gonna go back out?
Yes, they are, yes.
Are they gonna go on the same panel?
Yes, I believe so at this time, we're, you know, we're still, there's still some communication about some new parts that weren't a part of the bid, that I think we both are on the same page, that probably was pretty, running wires from a panel to your box is something that I would assume would be addressed when you talk about doing it, and that, and that wasn't, so that's gonna be another added cost, and, you know, when you do the warrants or however that works out, you'll see that it's, it's substantial, it's much more than what it was gonna be, so.
And this is not, so, it doesn't matter, kinda comment, but one of the things, as Joel says, when I talked to them, they, I told them that we didn't really have a choice, it's like, you know, here's our second estimate, it's, well, the project has begun.
Yeah.
We don't really have a choice, but ultimately, it's not gonna cost Winter of Taxpayers anymore, it is, will come out of S R funds.
Yes.
Which is what we had intended anyway, we had, we had some room to breathe there, but what that means is that's gonna be ultimately, and it's not just this project, Joel's gonna talk about another project, I think, in a second here, where we ended up incurring additional costs. That one is more money, but very legitimate.
Agreed.
But this one was a little frustrating, but it's, it's still ultimately is going to come out of S R funds, not, not through the taxpayers.
And again, you know, we said this phrase yesterday, we're not trying to nickel-and-die here, it's just, when you ask somebody to give you the heads-up, and they just do it, it's just not, it's just something I want you to remember, in case I'm not standing here, and in future, that's not my plan, but I'm just saying, just, just be aware and so forth. And again, great people, great people, I'm not trying to, it just didn't work the way that I expected to, that's all. Maybe that's my fault. And then at the middle school, you'll just see that the new addition, this is simply being done because we're in a position where we can, and it's coming up anyways, I think it was two years out, but it was something that we just figured, everybody, it's one of those deals where somebody, the crew is here, the materials are here, you know, kinda like if you tar your driveway and your neighbor's doing it, you get a better deal, so it just made sense when, when Jim explained to me that this is, that we're doing it at this point, because it's something that makes sense, and is financially will help us being on-site. Again, not that this would impact students in any way, besides making noise on the roof, but they'll be out of there by the tenth, this is real quick. And just so you're aware, the rubber roof is basically just a flat tire that they roll out and they glue and tire. It's not, it's not very intrusive at all, so this is more maintenance and being proactive, which I think is a great philosophy for us to start being proactive on some things, so. Any questions on that? I knew I just kinda flew through it, but I didn't wanna insult your intelligence that you couldn't look at a piece of paper and see what was going on. But again, this, you know, this is a half a million dollar project right here, you know what I mean, and I just think that's really important for people to know that, you know, we understand that there's some things at the grade school that need to be addressed, and we are, and this is one of them, there's no sense to do things underneath it if it's gonna get wet and ruined, so. Okay, so just moving on with the grade school, I actually met with the crew today of our maintenance folks for about four hours, to get a really in-depth look about how things work district-wide, what they're seeing. I think all of us that have been around a little bit know that maintenance is the first thing to go, and it's showing. This is certainly, you know, coming into a time where we're gonna have to have some pretty honest conversations. Siding at the grade school, just continuing on as, as Mr. Hartzkin explained, the original bid was in the mid twenties, and that was just to simply take the siding off and put new siding on. The good news is that they used steel beams instead of two-by-fours to build that high school, so the bones are actually quite good of that school, and I, and I really feel that way now that I've had a chance to move around in there with John Bear. The bad news is that everything that was holding those bones together was rotted, so the project just doubled, so it went from mid twenties to fifty, because as they were taking the siding in the windows out, so was the wall, they were literally looking straight through into the classroom, so not, not a great scenario, but I gotta be honest, I'm not surprised either. But they're doing it right, they're redoing everything, they're taking everything out that's rotted, they're removing it, they're replacing, they're doing ice-water shield, they're putting in new sills in the windows, and it's, it's, you know, it's not, it's not the best case now, but it's not the worst, if you were to get into something like this and have to bring a whole crew out, you're probably talking in the seventies. So, I guess, you know, if there's a silver lining that it's, that they're here already, they discovered it, they were right there, and they, they did it. I do know that it's gonna take them a little bit longer, but again, it won't interfere with anything going on in the school system, so, yeah, and that's just the way it is. They're, they're, also another, I gotta say, a great crew, talked with them a couple times, they've talked with Jeannie, and it worked out how they're gonna work around each other and so forth, so.
Is that the grade school?
Yes, yes, it's the, the new green on the front of the building here, so, but, yeah, that's it. Anything you wanna add to that, Mr. Hartzkin, just because I know you, you kinda initiated, okay. There are new A C plugs for all of the, there was an issue electrically needing to be addressed in the classrooms where the A Cs were, also in the old high school, I believe they call that the south wing, I'm not sure if that's right or not, but it sounds familiar. So, that's all been done, they've also put in three new window doors, two in guidance, and one will, I believe, be in the learning lab. There's gonna be some new electricals, outlets that, it's already, this has already been paid for in the gym area, because there wasn't anything, I guess, for the floor, simply where the old scorer's box used to be was where the only electrical was to that area, so that's, that's been, or going to be replaced. The gym floors will be done next Wednesday, they're gonna do a different treatment that I learned about today, where they're gonna take some mineral spirits and kinda scuff up the varnish and so forth, to get up the old tape and the years of grime, and then they'll scuff it, and they'll go back over that, that'll be next Wednesday. The plan is to have, I guess, the archway out here painted, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that at all, one's whole side because of the weathering has basically peeled all the paint off, that's something that John's hoping to get at, but looking at the budget, we actually have some money for paint that we can talk about hiring out to, to get that, because he's got some things I'm gonna get to at the bottom here that's gonna take a lot of time for him. Also, met with a mason to review the steps going into the gym at the grade school, into the gym area, there's two options that he's got there, I'm gonna encourage Mr. Hartzkin to have a conversation with you guys to do the second option, which is more, because we won't have to cut, come back to it. This will be the second patch that I know of, just being around in five years, and it's just simply, you know, covering up the cracks and waiting for them to crack again, but he's, he's got some ideas that he can do some things, that he'll be able to hopefully fix that and be done. Big issues at the grade school that I think we're gonna, I get a couple ideas I think we can do to patch some things, which, we have some major issues with the paving, that's nothing new to anybody, I realize that. What the issue is, though, that is now existing, is that the culvert or the drain pipe has completely collapsed in on itself, because it's in the middle of dirt. It's that big, you know, where Mr. Lad usually parks out back, it's that area right behind him, so that is going to have to be addressed, or you're gonna have safety issues with that freezing during the winter because the water cannot drain. So, that's, there's some ideas that I've talked to Mr. Burnham that leads the, the town, that we can probably put some reclaim in there and talk about that piece, but I've just, I'm not really sure, he hasn't had a chance to look at it, because he's busy, too. But that is just, you know, again, a lot of these things, I'm just throwing at you to just hear it, and then I'll, I'll come back to you with some ideas, or hopefully something that's been able to fix it, and, and again, I know Jim and I meet almost on a weekly basis at this point, just to make sure that everything's going in the right direction. Staff bathrooms in the grade school, I didn't realize this, they're horrific, there are no tiles in the ceiling, the upstairs one actually has a ratchet with a light fixture hanging off of it, and that's, that's the piece, and when I talked with John about that, he just said he didn't know where to get the tiles, so that's gonna be an easy fix, but I wanted to tell you that, because I guess apparently it's an ongoing conversation, so. I never heard it at my dining room table, so I didn't know it existed, but that's because she doesn't teach in that way, so I guess this, that's, would be that. Easy fix again, nothing to worry about too, too much. Something to kinda put on your radar, and I'm not even sure, we haven't even had a chance to talk about this, is just the town office with the heat pumps, so there's a couple things going on there, so what has been discovered, totally makes sense, is that when these got converted into offices, they never adjusted the heating or the air circulation to a non-classroom side. is that when these got converted into offices, they never adjusted the heating or the air circulation to a non-classroom size. So what that means is, is that it was set for basically to rise and fall with fifteen or more bodies in it. Um, so they would never kick it on. So what that translates to now is that they weren't being used properly, so now that they're almost inoperable. So that's been changed, but they're now operating, uh, at a very low efficiency. The one in the town office area itself is not working, has to be replaced. So depending on who you work with, you're talking of a range between seven and fifteen thousand dollars per unit, and there's six down here. Um, so there's, there's two ways you can go with that, we can have a conversation with the town and just say, you know, this is, this is what's happening, um, which I think is happening with the first one, I don't know, John, I guess, had a conversation with her yesterday or so forth, um, that they're willing to do that, but those are gonna have to be replaced. Um, and again, and you know, I said this to Mr. Hodgekin this morning, we can do one of two ways, they can handle it, or they have to understand that we're gonna have to bump our maintenance lineup to address those things, so please don't come back to us and tell us to cut things, because that's gonna be you first. You know, I mean, that's, it's one of those things that, you know, we've talked about it for years and we're in a good place with the town, I'm not trying to stir anything up, but the reality is, is there's a pretty big bill coming, uh, and someone's gonna have to foot that. Um, and it's, in my opinion, it comes from the same pot, so it doesn't really matter to me, it's just what looks good on paper. Uh, but that is something, yes.
Is there, uh, any discounts through efficiency main or anything that you could get?
I don't know, we have to look at all those things.
Yeah, we have to look at those, um, but I can tell you that I think that there's some local people right here that can help us out, um, give us a much better price, um, and that's totally fine to do, we're not locked into Siemens by any means.
Uh, we may, Mr. Porter, leave that.
Yeah.
The, um, I, I know I reported to the committee a couple times during the course of last year that I've had some conversations with Siemens, our controls company, about potentially doing a, a performance contract with all of our buildings. Um, what I don't know is, is sort of the oddity that's created by sharing the facility with the town. Uh, I don't think, I can't imagine knowing their business that it should make any difference at all. Um, but, that, they definitely, that would be an area where they can take a look at those heat pumps, they're incorporating into the, to the, uh, the whole contract and maybe get it all done at once. And they're gonna, they'll look at everything, it's a very comprehensive study, um, where they'll look at all of our buildings, they'll look at our windows, they'll look at our lighting, they'll look at the building envelope, they'll look at every, every, uh, heat sources, all of those things.
Right.
And come back with a, a potential project for us.
So, is that the right?
I can tell you that it's, you know, and I'm very familiar with not just their work, but other people who've done it, uh, and the one I had direct involvement with was over in ours before, when I was superintendent over there, they did two million dollars worth of work, two million dollars worth of upgrade, and it cost the, um, taxpayers zero dollars, because the, the savings is in the efficiencies. And they, they make the promise that, uh, they will cost it out, you'll have to, it's gonna cost you this much for, for this much time, uh, look at the payback. And it's a guarantee, if for some reason you don't realize the savings they say you're going to, they have to pay the difference. And when we went through the process and other companies I've talked to, they've never had to pay the difference, they've never had to pay, they've never been wrong. So they're obviously very conservative in their, in their estimate, but.
It seems like the timing would be good after getting the roofs done and the siding replaced and the walls fixed and that would be the time, that would be the next logical step.
I agree, certainly would give us a plan for me of, of, okay, here's what we're attacking next, you know, let's make this happen, you know, that's, that, that would be great. So that's pretty much, uh, it for the grade school, unless there's anything, anybody has any questions, or, I have some other district-wide stuff that may affect the grade school, but.
Um, just an issue that I know, and I don't, this is kind of a question.
No, it's okay, that's how we-
And John's probably aware of that too, some of the bathrooms, like, and I know with COVID too, like, the, the little kids have to turn the sinks on at two.
Yep.
Like, they just need to really look at, afraid, and I don't even wanna just quote, but ask them the first grade teachers or, or talk to John, but there's been some issues, like when sending boys in there, if you're a female teacher, and they just go in and play 'cause something's not, the door's on, I, I don't know, something.
Okay.
But, um, just that, and then I noticed too, and again, this is if you're gonna hire up painting, just to look at the front of grade school, 'cause that's looking pretty ragged.
Okay.
The wood, like, with the old nurses entrance, that?
Yes.
Just that front area right there.
I think that's what John was talking about with the archway.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's, yes, there is an arch there, okay, awesome, I didn't know if that was out back or not.
Yep, no, 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 I think that's exactly what he was talking about, 'cause he said it was on the front of the school, so.
And then, uh, I think they were, they were possible, you know, did you, did they replace water fountains in the grade school this year?
At the grade school, I'm not sure, you know, school, high school, yes.
Or they, did they, they share like one water fountain?
No, they did, we upgraded those last, we added, I think we added three more each.
Okay, all right, maybe that was before that, that, that conversation with John.
Those are the ones, the touchables ones that slide the cup under and it fills it.
Yeah.
Which are great too, anyways, just for efficiency of water. Um, okay, uh, moving on to the middle school. Uh, so up at the middle school, we have a new compressor which basically keeps, uh, air pressure to circulate, uh, the water as well as the heat in the, in the school. Um, the roof is also being redone, as we just touched on, uh, in the gym, uh, floors will be done next Monday. Um, and then those, that area, and, and this is known to everybody, will be shut off for two weeks as everything, um, the shellac hardens. Um, this year we've already, uh, through Troy's hard work, he's already done, uh, five rooms that have been repainted, which is just really great, 'cause you know, that's, that's great for teachers as well as kids to walk into and just, you know, have that fresh look, um, the things are ready to go. Um, some things that we talked about today that you put on your radar. Um, the water system at the middle school is, is failing, it's forty years old now. Um, it's, it's, two years ago when we looked at it, it was had a fifty thousand dollar price tag on it. That's something that will have to be budgeted for and coordinated, um, and that was done by two separate folks, it was a local guy, Mr. Crowe, and then somebody out of Augusta, and I don't know who that is. Um, and that was about the ballpark for it. What, what, what that's meaning is, is that it's very close to that if it does fail, that your school will be shut down because there won't be any water circulating through the school. Um, and speaking with Troy today, the information that he'd received, it would take at least a week to get it back up and running, so. You know, this is the conversation where we talk about, we need to budget to be proactive, um, so we have those types of things, you know, like, I'd really like to see us get as a district that we have a backup to a backup plan, and I know that costs money. Um, but I can tell you that from talking to these guys today, I think they're not, they're not far from saying there's not much more that people can do. So there's some of these systems that we have to have, we just need to start having conversations about. Um, and back to what you were talking, talking about with the study, I'm sure stuff like those would, would come up and tell us, not, not energy efficient, but it might be something that, um, comes from that. If you, if you take that a step further, they, they, they put something what's called Guycall, have you ever heard of that? It's basically what you would do to put in, like, if you were to winterize a boat and you put in antifreeze to your engines. Um, that's what's in this heating system and the water system. When they built, when they built the, um, school in the eighties, they built the holding tank actually in a classroom. So that is starting to leak, which, um, there's, there's no immediate danger, I don't wanna, you know, but it's getting to a point where um, it's, it's, it's releasing an odor and it is toxic, it's certainly nothing the kids can get near, it's not in the area, any of those things, but it is something that is starting to, to, uh, to become an issue. Um, that goes with part of the water system, the plan would be to move that right out of the classroom closet and put it downstairs away from everybody, um, and obviously replace it. Where that starts to get into an issue with structural pieces, that it's right above the new compressor that I just mentioned, that that's uh, there, which means you now have something that's basically, um, very acidic, um, and, and it's dripping on a brand-new piece of equipment, um, which is never good, regardless if it's acidic or not, um, but it certainly is something that needs to be addressed sooner than later. Um, again, I, do we have time? I, I think so, it could break tonight, I don't know. Um, but, at the same time, these are things that were talked about two years ago, um, and I can remember when I did this job four to five years ago, that that was on the table to talk about the water system, so. I can tell you that, you know, it's been five years and it can't be ignored anymore, is, is what I'm being told, and I trust the people that run their buildings.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is that something that would, to be fixed, is, would it interrupt school if, if it? Not, not in an emergency, like, if we looked at the, let's get this done?
Right, I, I, my thought, I, I would check on that, because I, I don't know, but from what I understood from my conversation, it would not if you coordinated it correctly, so you could do all the prep work and do it over February break.
Okay.
You know, something like that, um, so that's something, yes, you can certainly take a look at. Um, and then the, the last piece was, is just, uh, that, that Troy was saying that's been on the, the docket for a while, is just to try to update and get some cameras in some different areas. Um, it was interesting actually, because last week I had to deal with someone on our backfield, uh, doing burnouts again. Um, so that's the second time this summer, and we can't do anything about it because they're coming in from High Street, and I can't see who it is. Um, so, we did, the first time they did it, they made a mistake and went wide, and we have to make up the vehicle, and we we've pretty much know who it is, but we can't prove it, um, we need to see something a little bit clearer and so forth. Um, so, I share that with you simply because, um, not only is it damage that we're not gonna be able to replace in time for the season by any means, it may cause some issues, but it's just to Troy's point that we don't have all areas covered, um, which is the case at the high school too, and I'm sure the grade school and so forth, so. Um, that would probably be something we would talk about a five-year strategic plan, that we wanna talk about upgrading and, and putting some new things in for for safety as well as just to discourage vandalism, so. On to the high school, uh, that's the biggest part of the, unless, I'm sorry, do you have any questions about the-
What was the first act of the end of the water system?
Uh, two years ago, it was fifty thousand dollars, yep. So, and I don't know if that's gone up or down, I would have a sneaky suspicion up.
It's playing gone down.
Yeah, right, especially with what's going on now, so. Um, the, uh, high school, uh, obviously the roof, the gym floor will be, uh, getting done. Uh, the really, uh, great thing about the gym floor is that we actually have somebody now that we've got in there that we can put down tape, um, for Mr. Van Tassel's pickleball as well as badminton, uh, on an annual basis, he had to put those down, and then he would have to take them up with painter's tape, which doesn't hold up very well. Um, the gentleman, uh, that we've now hired actually does all of the floors for the university main system, so he really knows what he's doing. His name's Don Fowler, out of Bangor, and he, um, he has given us tape, not given, but directed us to buy a certain type of tape that Mr. Van Tassel, they'll put that down, he'll be able to shellac right over it, um, which is great. So that'll be there for him, and, and, yes, it helps with work and so forth, but, um, it won't ruin the floor. The biggest thing that we're dealing with is, not only is it the wrong floor that they installed, for anybody that's been around, um, it's staging floor, it's not gym floor, that's why I can't take it down anymore to sand it, because it's too thin. Um, and it doesn't reverb and all that, but, um, they switched from oil to water and then went back to oil, so that's why you saw things starting to separate, and that actually affected some of the flooring, and that's why you see the big gaps, is because there was a chemical reaction. Because of what we're doing now, he can simply just scuff it and just keep shellacking it, and it will, it will fill in in low areas and eventually be, if you've been up to the middle school in the last five years, it's wonderful. It's, it's a solid floor, it bounces a ball, it gets supposed to, it's got the right give and so forth. That's where we'll eventually get back to, but it's gonna be a while. Um, but it will, this, this is a move in the right direction. Um, there's a new projector in the library that George has installed, um, that is, that's gonna be a fantastic resource, not only for our students, but also our, our staff, I would say. Um, and it's, there's a, if you've been in the library, it's, it's a, there's a massive screen there that comes down on the, the large window, and this projector will do a much better job, not only projecting, but it, it won't be something you have to set up, it'll be something you turn on like we do in the PHC. Up to three rooms right now, trying to get six done up there, which again, is just something that we like to do to try to get people a smile on their face when they come back, that they see that we care about the buildings too. Uh, Jenna, you'll be very happy to hear, Miss Dyke, excuse me, um, that the pine trees will be getting cut, the later this week or early next week, he's just running behind due to the weather. Um, and all of the large pine, so anything over thirty feet around the edge, uh, in, uh, another five feet into the woods will be cut back. Uh, Mr. Hickman and I have had, uh, multiple conversations, and the goats will be arriving, uh, as soon as that's done. Okay, um, so he's gonna, yeah, it'll be a, it'll be a show, um, fundraiser. Right, right.
Can you go after?
Yeah, there you go. Um, they're gonna come in and, uh, do the softball, baseball, and then they'll be down here to do the side hill here, uh, above Maxwell Field. Uh, that's the plan, if we get there, great, if not, at least we have a contact now and, and he knows that we're not just pulling his leg, uh, and that we're pretty serious about getting him in there, so. Uh, there's another group he said too, out of Randolph, that he could probably call if we got to a situation we wanted to get it done, so, which I'd like to, because, uh, part of the report is that we also found out today from Sportsfield, they came over and met with me for about a half an hour. Uh, Roundup is now illegal in the state of Maine, can't use that at all, um, which is what they used for poison ivy as well as our infield cleanup. Um, he's already caught, they're fantastic, um, they've already contacted a group out of Massachusetts that has a certain, um, policy, town ordinance, whatever, that, on the ocean, that they have to use a non-toxic one that works very well. It's not very pricey, so he's pretty excited about that, so we've already shifted gears to something different. Um, so that will continue, but I don't know what that means as far as pricing goes, I don't think it's anything huge, uh, according to him. Uh, the front entrance, I think I talked about, or I know I talked about quickly, about the concrete. Uh, the fence going down to the softball field will be getting removed, we're just trying to find something that doesn't, there's two things with the chain-linked fence, uh, it doesn't look as inviting, uh, but it also is extremely difficult to keep cut back, uh, because things start to grow in there and it's, it's not good for weed whackers.
I think the grade's wider, I'm talking to Penn.
Yeah, we'll just do that, keep them right out of there, right, we'll just leave the goats, you know what I mean, we'll build something out of Mr. MacArthur's class. Um, on the radar up there, uh, just be aware, please, that the oil pump for the boiler is starting to go. Uh, you're looking at twenty years now, um, no idea what that cost, just heard about it in a meeting today. Uh, I'm sure Mr. Hodgekin's either, is just hearing about it or knows all about it, it's fifty-fifty, so. Um, but it's, it's something that is gonna have to be addressed, because obviously that would shut school down too. Um, if we're not getting heat in the building and then that creates a whole different, I know how that is. Um, there's two doors at the high school, and I have no idea what they cost, but I know they're not cheap. Coming into the back entryway of Mr. MacArthur's, um, they're metal doors that have a pane of glass, and when it rains, you can watch the rain run down the pane of glass, uh, because the tops are completely rusted out. The same thing is in the cafeteria door. So, um, I think very easily, and I don't even know if there's a way to explore a safety grant, but it's to the point that that door will not be safe to keep people out. Uh, not this second, but it's heading that direction, um, I'm sure today when it rained, that it was running down there. The flaw of the high school is, is that they put the grade above the door jams or the thresholds. So when it rains, water collects in front anyways and rots from the bottom up. And the dormers that have been in the budget for the last three years have never been built, so everything runs down on the top too. Um, so, two things off of that, one, we need to get dormers done, I'm just having a hard time, Five Star right now is two and a half years out. All seasons, they're another year out, there's, it's very difficult to find people, 'cause everybody's building, 'cause they have, they're not doing their trips and everybody watches the news, you know what I'm talking about, so they're, they're quite busy. Um, so we need to get to that point where we can do something, and then I think we need to have a serious discussion about removing some things in front of the building, at least putting crushed rock in, um, so it can properly drain, 'cause it's not. Um, George probably, no exaggeration, will, any between thirty and forty hours a year, because the sun never shines back there, so after things melt, it's glare ice out there, um, we've seen people at basketball games go down. Um, it's nothing to be out there, and I'll be throwing, um, you know, some snow melt down, and an hour later, it's already frozen, just because it's, there's no place for it to go. Uh, not doom and gloom, but, you know, we're aware of it, we have to address it, you know, that type of thing, so. Um, any thoughts on the high school? I know I'm flying through this, but these people in front of me probably don't even care, they don't wanna hold them up too long, so, it's interesting, isn't it? Where's the high school? Um, anyways, uh, so there's that piece. Um, tomorrow, Sportsfield's coming in, I'm really excited about this, this year we wrote a grant for ten thousand dollars from Chevy. Uh, I don't for a second think that I'm a good writer, that I certainly have it in with Mr. Schuman, uh, and I really appreciate that, but, um, he doubled up what we usually can do. Uh, and the field hockey field and the outfield slash soccer field is gonna be re-crowned. Um, I hope you've had a chance to get up there, closing those fields down was probably the best thing that we could have done, that's gonna continue for the next three weeks after the crowning. What the crowning entails is George went out and aerated today. Uh, tomorrow they'll come in and they'll put a, a higher grade down the middle, so the, the water runs off properly, and they'll fill in all the low areas. So if you watch field hockey in the schools at your back, all the, all the way down to your right, there used to be little islands of grass, those have filled in, but the low areas still exist. They'll come in and fill that in with loam, they'll go behind it and they will, uh, use a roller that also has an aerator behind it, and then they'll go in and seed it and fertilize it, and within two to three weeks, we'll have some Kentucky bluegrass which grows quickly. It's not a good root structure, but it'll get us through the fall, and then that will start to seed itself next year and so forth. Um, something that we also did is we took part of that grant and we bought a pressure, uh, I don't know, I was gonna call it's a booster, it's, it's a water booster. So we can now run water from the dugout out to the outfield area, and we can, the water train that we bought last year can now cover the whole field, so. Um, if you are up that way, if you wanna go for a walk or something, I would say, check it out, it's, both fields are the greenest that I've seen since, probably since the school opened. You know, you look at some of the pictures in the trophy hall and you see some of the retired numbers, and there's some pretty plush green grass. Uh, we're starting to get there, but we're not there quite yet. Um, and again, that's kudos to a lot of work that George- Um, and again, that's kudos to a lot of work that George has done, yes, it's his job but he takes pride in those fields. He's, you know, I asked him to plug those fields at, at six o'clock in the morning with an email and I showed up to work at quarter of seven and it was done. Um, that's just the type of guy he is and it's, it's great to have him on staff, staff, not that the other guys aren't but he just certainly steps up for us. Paving at the high school and middle school is also gonna become a priority for us because you're gonna start to be dealing with issues of water not draining properly, it's getting underneath the tar, it's freezing and refreezing and it's cracking. Um, the piece of that, just to be aware of, is that the last time we had this discussion, it was a hundred thousand dollars to do the middle school, that was everything. Uh, but we could certainly have a discussion about certain sections of it, uh, there's, you know, obviously some areas up there that need to be addressed first. Uh, specifically, instead of taking the loop to your left, if you go straight, there's just dirt in between there and that's, that's a problem area. That's where drainage is, that's where freezing and, and, and it's gonna continue just to crack and break things up. Um, at the high school, you just, uh, we're not gonna replace most of the curving because that's done from plowing. Um, but there are some areas that because the curving is not there, it gets underneath and it freezes again. It expands, at this point, I'm sure you get the, the drill. Um, and it has to be addressed, you know, it's, it's just one of those things, so. Let's see. Having a conversation with Siemens, I'm not liking it but I'm having it. Um, there, our computer is now becoming outdated, um, for, uh, our boiler systems. The way it's set up now is that the one computer on George's desk runs everything in the district. So they're having a conversation saying that we should probably have the other guys be able to have access to it. That's, I've talked to Mr. Delisle, there are some things we can do to have access. What they keep conveniently doing is upgrading their software, uh, even though everything's working fine and that's kind of a knock but not, I guess. Um, so that our computer is becoming outdated. Uh, the price tag of what they would like to do that for is, is not even a conversation in my book and I don't know how you feel about it but it's pretty substantial. Um, so I'm, I had a conversation, I think, with Dan today, who's the guy that I met, this kinda newer, he used to be over at Levitt, right? Um, and he's, he's gonna check into some things for us. Um, but I just, again, I'm, I'm not trying to wow you with stuff but I just want you to be, you know, if I come back to you in six months and just say, hey, remember that computer thing? Well, that's done. Uh, and right now our boilers are just running and we're lucky, you know, that type of thing, so. Um, and again, I, you know, George is, feels very confident that we're in a good space, it's just something that's coming down the road. Yeah. Oh, good point. That's great, awesome. See, you're ahead of me, you don't need me. Uh, okay, Sue. Uh, just to back to your, I plan on being at that webinar that you were referring to earlier, thank you for sending that, when you have the, uh, link, please send it to me. Uh, I just have a very vested interest, not just from being in the schools but we're cautiously moving furniture back. Um, and as Mr. Harkins and I discussed yesterday, it was this time last year they threw us a curveball and we were like, great. Uh, now we have to get everything out of there, so we, it's, it's hard to buy into it because we've been down this road. Um, I think as long as, and I can't speak for anybody but myself, you know, as long as they keep saying the word recommend, uh, then we can just keep moving forward, uh, which is good. Uh, but at the same time, if they change that to required, then we're in a whole different ball of wax in many areas, not just what I'm talking about and that's, that is what he can decide. Uh, with support, of course, so. Um, any questions on maintenance stuff? And again, if you think of things, please email me, that's not a problem, Mr. Harkins and I have met twice this week. Um, I'm very up to date of what's going on now but he, uh, certainly helped me with a lot of those things so if you do have your meeting with him and so forth, he can let you know on some things, so.
Uh, I have a question, did I hear you say that you're gonna have that in your report?
Yes, so when some of these, as these start to get checked off, I will write them out for you, you know, just, uh. Yeah, well, what I'll, what I'll, what I'll probably do is like when the administrative reports come out, I'll just say, you know, as we talked about, you know, this is, the roof project is now done at the grade school, you know, that type of thing, so. Um, and I can't give you that master list yet because I don't have it, I simply.
Well, but it's not even, yeah, and it's not even worth to think about how to do that because Joel started this whole report with was, undoubtedly, unfortunately Kelly's not here tonight but a sizable majority of the stuff that he's talking about that needs to be in that comprehensive plan that we're working together.
Yeah, the strategic plan, great.
Absolutely, yeah, actually, I honestly think, to be honest with you, this section is gonna be a lot easier than athletics because it's pretty straightforward. This needs to be addressed, this is why, this is how, you know. Correct, correct. What I'm, what I'm throwing at you now is, is a, a very short timeline that it needs to be addressed and it might be determined by the system, not us. So, that's kind of why, like, I have more stuff that we talked, I'm not kidding you, we, we met for four hours today, there's a lot to deal with. Uh, and that's okay, I love it, I love jumping into that stuff. Um, but it's just, these are the things that, you know, I've, I found out today and that Mr. Harkins and I have talked about that we need to plan for. I, I totally agree with you, I totally agree with you. Please do, please do.
You guys are hearing is what I was saying and, and I didn't have the specifics that Joel is sharing with you now but, but especially those who've been in the community for a long time, uh, and I'm not blaming or pointing fingers at anybody but this, 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 the bottom line of this report is a, um, years and years and years and years of neglect.
Yes.
Buildings and maintenance have always been, no matter what system I've been in, uh, needs to tend to say, well, we'll put it off for a year, we'll put it off for a year. You know, we'll save a hundred grand here, we'll save a hundred grand here. Well, we could pay the hundred grand then, now we're gonna pay three hundred grand for the same thing and that's, and unfortunately that's what has, has happened, that's why I was trying to say to you that, yeah, I, I feel pretty confident in all of the things that Joel is talking about but I can't do it and do this and do that, we need somebody, our buildings, we have over seventy million dollars worth of assets. It warrants somebody paying attention to it, so, and that's what you're hearing.
I totally agree, I totally agree and, um, we have some great people in the buildings but their job is not to do what I'm talking to you about. You know, their job is to work in the buildings, you know, I think Mr. Harkins and I met when he came back and we had a pretty in-depth conversation, we want our principals to be educational leaders so we wanna take this off their plate. We also want our maintenance guys to be able to do their maintenance and not stand there when someone's doing an elevator inspection, that makes no sense. You know, there's, there's, but, but they also are paying attention, we have some really good people in your buildings that know what's up. Um, and, and, and that's, that's, uh, some really good stuff here. Um, so the last thing I'd like to leave you with, I mean, I'm sure you guys have heard about this, is that, so, um, I've had a group get together twice now and we've talked about creating an athletic complex, uh, somewhere in Winthrop. And that's as far as it's gotten, so. And Mr. Harkins, just so you're aware, has been in the loop the whole time, before I even met with these folks and said, hey, I've been working on this idea by myself for three or four years. I'm at a point where I'd like to go forward with this and he said, absolutely. Uh, we spoke about it again today, you know, we have a plan moving forward but I wanted you to be aware of it, so. Um, our plan is, is to create an athletic complex that has turf and has an eight lane track and that has a fantastic, um, facility in general. Um, you know, we. Including bathrooms. What's, and a snack shed, yes. So, um, as a matter of fact, this afternoon I spoke with Adam Wagner, um, he's a former alumnus. Um, and Jen, I know that Stacy has talked to you about your job as of January first, is to get the alumni movie.
And I kill.
I'm sorry, that's right, because that means we lose it here, right? Um, the, the, uh, the theme, the thought process is that we would like to offer, so there's a couple of things, there's an angle that we're talking about that we would like to offer, big school facilities and with a small town center. Those facilities should be for the community, they should be for our kids, you know, we need to have some conversations around that. Uh, Mr. Harkins has talked to the town manager, I think they're at a point where they'd like to be part of the discussion but I'm not, I haven't crossed that bridge yet. Wanted to have this discussion with you folks first. Um, as you're probably pretty aware, we have some financial backing from, from Charlie's that they're willing to move forward and so forth. Um, not, we're not discussing money, we're not discussing where that's going, all that. Right now, we are in the position where we have come up with ideas of what we would like for the complex. Um, and I'm speaking to Adam Wagner, like I said, who was a former alumnus, um, he's designing all that at no cost to us. Uh, what we would like to do that is to come up with an idea, uh, and then I'll sit with Mr. Harkins and then we will decide how we wanna move forward with it, at that, so. What I really just want you to hear is, is that nobody's out there doing anything on their own. We're, I, I think you guys know me better than that anyways but, um, he's been in the loop the whole time, we're talking to some people. Um, we have some people that are willing to come in and do some pro bono work for us. Last night we had the athletic director from Lewiston come up and speak to us and say, you know, it was a Q and A and what do you expect, what did you not expect, that type of thing. We had the gentleman that installs turf come in and explain what it is, why it's, it's a positive, why it's not. Um, and our goal is, is that we don't wanna spare any cost, we want to overachieve. Um, you know, we've even gone to the point where we've developed of, I, I didn't know this, this kinda blew me away, I stopped talking. When you replace your turf, it's only twelve thousand bucks. So, if you rent your field four times a year, the life expectancy is fifteen years. If you rent your field four times a year and you put that right into your upkeep of your field, you've paid for that over and over again. Let alone the time it's gonna not to paint it, you know, the times that you'll rent it to people, the time that I won't be out there, uh, painting it. That's not why we're building it but it just, I'll be able to focus my time in other areas. Anything else that I forgot on that?
No, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's early in the game.
Yes.
But it's very exciting and, um, from a town council's standpoint, it's one of the things I talked to the, uh, town manager about is, um, if, it should be a nice draw, add to the lure of being here in Winthrop to be able to have a facility like that for our community and hopefully will help us, um, attract.
Yes.
People to come, move to our community.
The plan includes parking, right?
Yes.
Well, yeah, yes it does, and I know, I had the answer for that, so, oh, wait a minute, that answer's premature so I don't wanna talk about it right now. You know, we need, do need to talk about how to, uh, how to systematically move forward with this and get to the, uh.
So, our philosophy, if I can interrupt, uh, is just this, we are not going to create a great complex, put it in the middle of the woods and figure out everything afterwards. From an athletic director's point of view, how can I manage this, how can I get people in there? How can I host M B C championships of two to three hundred people and park them safely and not have to hire police at all times? If it's a big event, yes. So, going into this, we're looking at it from a vantage point of, how do we manage this? How do we make it open to the community? Does this stop people from going to cancel because of facilities? Uh, does this, does this draw more people, and our population goes up and helps our tax brackets? You know, there's, there's a, we're looking at it from every point of view. Um, Tavis Hassanfuss is on the committee as somebody, you know, from, you know, state government, just to be a, a, a part of that. Uh, but he's also a lawyer, so he's willing to do some of the work, uh, for the underwriting at no cost. Rick Conant, the, the local person, is willing to do all of the, um, all the work as the, it's a skipper meeting, thank you, electrical architect or civil engineer, whatever it is.
I'm totally with you on the parking thing, I'm really ever spoke to parking, so.
Absolutely, me too.
Can we just make sure we have an engineer, like a civil engineer?
Hundred percent.
Involved.
Yes.
I am married to a civil engineer, if you need him.
I would love him.
Um, I bet I can talk him into giving him some advice for free.
We, so, we are at that point right now. That'd be great, that would be great because, so the reason I got hitched up with Adam is, and Adam was upfront, I'm not a civil engineer. I'm gonna design a building for you.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be what you can start to put into, our next step is we're trying to create a book to bring to people. But I can tell you that I think that we're in a good place, that this is gonna happen. But we need people like your husband and I will certainly start to loop him in on that because I need someone to say, Joel, this is where you need to go next, because I've never done this before. Um, so yes, but, but I think, I think I've got a great group of people is what I want you to hear. Um, you guys will be part of this every step of the way. Uh, and again, I mean, it's almost weekly now that I'm speaking to Mr. Harkins, either via email, just giving him an update. Just wanna let you know, the word has leaked out a little bit more and so and so has contacted me, I don't think that this is gonna be, as, when I started this four years ago, I'm like, this is gonna be ten years, I'm gonna retire and watch this thing get built. You know what I mean, and, and I, I am shocked at the, the, there's more people in the same frame of mind as me. Um, you know, that wanna make these things happen.
Well, I think ten, ten years ago, my initial picture for our community was compared to the peak.
Yep. Agreed, I totally agree with you. Yes, absolutely, and that's, yes. Yes.
About the parking again, I'm just thinking, depending on where it's located.
Yes.
If it happens to be up in that middle school, high school area, could that be kind of a way to get that paving done? That you were talking about?
That's great idea.
Could that be a crossover where it would kind of alleviate that problem?
I think so. I think so, um, what I need is for somebody, so, ideal, if someone said to me, here's such and such a money, make this happen by next year, we would put the, we would put it right where the baseball field is. We would buy the land on the backside, turn that whole thing into a parking lot which would hold between two hundred and fifty to three hundred folks as well as have an access point from the high school that would just be controlled for officials, players, uh, you know, school personnel, that type of thing. Um, so, that is what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, when I explained to Adam, this is what we want, that was the first thing he came up with, looking at the lay of the land. There's a lot of land up there, I don't, I don't know if people understand that, not just community trails but all the way out to Apple Tree Crossing to the left, that's totally untouched. Um, I'd rather not cut any trees down, to be honest with you, but if we go with the baseball field, there's, I need a baseball field. So, you know, there's, there's, I, I think that's a great idea and I think that, you know, we're, we're at a point where we're getting, you know, we talked today, you know, I think it's a good idea to have some ideas and input at some point. Um, but right now I need to have a solid plan to come back to you with Mr. Harkins saying, yep, this makes sense, you know, he's got more expertise in this area and, and again, not just because it's sitting in front of me but he's been in other districts that they've done projects like this. I haven't, I'm a Winthropian, I've been right here, I played football there, I don't know any different, you know what I mean? Doesn't mean I can't learn, um, and we always beat Oak Hill and, uh, but. Done that too, um, anyways. Yes.
Do you have any idea what timeline you're thinking about when you would be coming?
We'd like to take this next six to eight months and get everything ready to break ground in the spring.
So, and, and we'll be real, you know, our conversation and I can, as you mentioned, I had my very first conversation with, with Jeff Cobra last, earlier this week, so. Very, very new. Um, but, you know, there are some obstacles that, I guess any of you who were around when high school was being built know that we have to think about, are there people who are still objectors? Because it, you know, I, I guess it's, it's worth putting out there, I mean, there are only seem, there seems like there's only two logical places in my mind.
Yes.
I, and Joel and I are in the same exact same page, there's really only one.
Yep.
Really logical place for, for this facility to go. But, that would be up at the high school, in the high school area. And if we want, um, lights on the field, which would be a ridiculous plan to go forward without lights on the field. Um, then, uh, there are, you know, and I, we have to figure out how do we identify who the objectors are.
Yep.
And to the extent that they still object, I don't know, nobody, and nobody seems to know the answer to that question, so.
Linda Caprera will know.
What's that?
Linda Caprera will know.
She'll know who would not want lights near their home.
Well, I think before we get to that, I think one of those conversations would happen, is that we would have the plan, we would have a conversation and then we would talk to the town council to go to the planning board, I guess, again, I don't know and those are conversations we can have at another time. I just wanna let you know that this is more of a, than an idea, that there's some serious backing behind it. And as we move forward, we will hit obstacles and it's gonna be a lot of work and there's gonna be a lot of decisions and so forth but, you know, we're committed to doing it.
So, one of the obstacles, we'll, we'll find what is, go back to the rest of this report.
Yes.
When we first talked about this and, and you and I have had this, this conversation, uh, looking at what we're expecting for a carryover this year, we could, we could, uh, potentially contribute a great deal of money towards the, the, right now, potential price type, which we don't know. Um, we're ballpark but it's, it's way premature to do that. But if we've got all these other projects, oh my god. It's gonna, it's gonna be tough, it's gonna be hard to do everything. Um, at some point we may have to consider bond, um, talked to Jeff about bonding, the town will be in a great place to do bonding in four years. I don't know that we necessarily wanna wait three or four years, it wasn't positive, but we, uh, we wanna wait. In the best case scenario, we wouldn't wait, be waiting four years, but, um, who knows, that might be what we do.
I think the town is in a position, I, I think I've had enough conversations come my way unsolicited that we can, we can absorb whatever. I do wanna say that, to that point, it's really important for grants that the school does contribute. Um, that is not a priority over anything else, it's just the way the grant world works.
Unless this, unless these guys really shock me, I don't think there's any doubt that there'll be support to, uh, provide some funding.
Absolutely.
Um, still about what I, what I had said to you.
Yes.
At a minimum.
Yep.
It still puts us in really good shape.
Great shape.
So, then we, I mean, does fundraising have to be considered, there's all, there's all kinds of pieces that, is grant writing, you know, talks about.
Exactly, and so we have, just so you're aware too, we have, the lady that wrote all of the grants for the city of Lewiston is on our committee and she has students coming up through the system and she has already got all of the paperwork together. All we need now is just to have a conversation with the civil engineer saying, this is what our plan is moving forward, so. Um, so we're in a really good spot, is all I'm trying to say. And again, I don't want you to think anything is going on without you guys knowing. And again, I don't want you to think anything is going on without you guys knowing. Mr. Harskin has been in the loop from day one since I started moving forward, so.
I, yeah, I did, I just had a, a comment on that. I'm sitting here listening very excited, sounds really awesome. Um, I would, especially if you're thinking, you know, down the road that you might wanna make a, a bond issue, make sure that you have a marketing a, a, aspect of this. Make sure that you have a way to present it to the public where you're talking it up. I'm listening right now and I'm getting excited.
Good, awesome.
Right?
Yes.
But don't forget that you're gonna wanna sell it to the town.
So what we have, um, being in process right now, is when we get the draft of the building and the layout, uh, is the front and back to a fundraising cover. Um, and it's, it's, we went over it last night, um, uh, it's the same thing that Lewiston did. Uh, and, and it's, there's all kinds of ideas in there, like for, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars, you can have a brick put down. You know, just little stuff that we've seen everywhere, but could bring here, so. But again, all of that will come to you at a later time, and, and, uh, just wanted to let you know it is happening. Um, and pretty soon, we will start to blow it up, and I just wanted you to be aware of it before you saw it. Yep, absolutely.
Can you put something like, um, as, as good as Lewiston, only better?
Yes, absolutely. As good, but small. More, you'll have more field time because you got less students.
Thank you, Joel.
Yes, anything else, and I, and I apologize to take up so much time, I just, uh... There's a lot going on.
If I have to form a your thought.
Yes, I appreciate it.
I try not to talk too much.
I'll have to think about that.
Thank you for your folks for listening, so.
So, there's no old business, so we will rate new business.
Five point one is gone.
Yep, no five point one. So I will entertain a motion to nominate Monica McLaughlin as high school English teacher beginning fiscal year twenty-two.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Did you have a discussion?
I, I just wanna, I just wanna speak very briefly.
Yeah, sure, sure.
I would do that. I just, um, wanted to tell you, to tell the committee how honored and excited I am, um, by the nomination and by the idea, um, that I will be, would be able to teach in my hometown. I've lived in Winthrop for twenty-four years. I love it. I've been involved in a whole bunch of different little kinds of ways, but to have the opportunity to really bring what I love to educating our kids, um, it means so much to me. And then the other thing that I wanted to say was that I had the opportunity during my interview with Principal Campbell and the, um, English department, um, and the, and the committee chair, um, to see what a fantastic English department we have in the high school. My gosh, what a collegiate collaboration. And I was just so excited to see how they were functioning and I'm like this, I'm listening to them, thinking like, gee, if I don't get hired here, I hope I can find a group that, you know, has this kind of synergy, because it's just really exciting. That's all that I wanted to say to you.
Thank you.
And I, being in that room and listening to all of you talk, he was very excited for knowing my two children are going to benefit from it. They're both being high school teachers. So any questions? All right, I will call the vote. Although, all those in favor? Vote passes four to zero. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much. And we will bid you adieu.
Thank you so much for coming.
Yay. I will entertain a motion to include the administrators' collective bargaining, bargaining agreement as amended.
Dad, you should get mom's water. Dad, mom's water.
So I just, I wanna explain what, what Joe and I were talking about, because I went back after, and I'm thinking, just like, well, we should be a little clearer, and I'm not sure, uh, I, I guess what I would just say, sort of right up front is, um, we had a lot of conversations, conversations with Joel, conversations with Kelly and, and Joe, and, uh, there were things, I told Joel, like, he's the president of that group, and, and, uh, I just said, there were parts of this project I just did not like at all. And, and then when we were looking at making some of the changes, like, well, why don't we do it now? And the big one was about how to, um, it's, it's kind of what Joe was talking about, is how do you create some sort of range? Because it, I found that what was there before was exceptionally prescriptive and, and not what I would wanna support as a superintendent. And, and in a, and I'll give you a, a real perfect example. Jolene Randall, we hired as the, as the grade school principal, um, and spent two years as an assistant principal, and now is gonna be the, the principal, and that's awesome, I'm thrilled to death that Jolene is doing that. But as a person with zero years' experience, um, as a principal, she's gonna make more money next year. And I'm not, this is fine, I mean, this is not an anti-Jolene thing, or I can't say that enough. She'll make more money next year than Jeff Flat, who's retired after being the principal for twenty years.
Something, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and, and it's just not, it just didn't make sense. And we had, the same thing happened at the middle school with the new hire, whatever. So I, I wanted to have, um, and I like as a superintendent to have some flexibility with, uh, with a range. So we put a range in there. Um, that makes it a little bit hard, that's, and, and when we negotiate with, with this group in a couple of years, um, I have some other ideas, and I really can't sort of throw them out there because we're not, we're not negotiating now. Um, but I, but it does fit into what Joe was talking about. But the, what we put in place under the sort of range was if those positions, if we had one FTE, if we had somebody who just did facilities, then is, is kind of what the range would be for somebody just doing one job. Uh, if we had a full-time athletic director, but, so all of those ranges are based upon an FTE. But we don't have, um, we, we, we have a lot of positions that are not just one FTE. So you, you put that in there, and then you go through the process of negotiating with whoever you hire. Joel's now doing facilities and athletic director, so he's doing two jobs, and he's not doing point five, point five. There's really no way, and that's what some people look at it that way, it's, it's, there's just no real way to do that. So you look at the roles and responsibilities of those, and you settle on a number. And we did, so we settled on a number, you guys noted on it last time, uh, for his position. After that initial hiring, there's no mystery to it. It's whatever, whatever you negotiate as, as a, uh, in the, uh, CBA, if it, it's usually a percentage. So they get the same, so now Joel, now that his, his salary's been established, next year, he'll get whatever the negotiated increase is, and then a year after that, negotiated increase. Uh, so the only mystery, so to speak, in that is in the initial, um, decision of whether you're gonna, if you're gonna hire an FTE, yeah, you, how it could arrange, you can say, somebody with no experience near the bottom of the range, somebody with a lot of experience towards the top of the range. Um, that's how that sort of works. Um, and once it, once that's been established, you have no more issues with anybody until, you know, until you have to hire somebody new again. So, uh, that's really was, that was the thing I was having the hardest time dealing with. I didn't think it was a good system that was in place. Um, I actually gave Joan some crap because I thought she had initially been part of helping you guys cover that. She's like, no, I did not do that. Uh, but it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. So I, I think it's, I feel good about what's here. It's not perfect, um, Joe, Joe asked some really big questions. Um, and one of the things that I think you always figure out when you're looking at a, like, a bargaining agreement, it has, it has a beginning, it has an end. Um, I'm very comfortable that we're not gonna have significant turnover in the next couple of years, so we can live it. I, from my perspective, I can easily live with this for the next few years. So hopefully you can as well, and it's important, and, oh, yes.
And Kelly's had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, Kelly and Joe were part of the, you know, the, the only thing, when we, what we ended up with, with Joel was a conversation, we had an executive session, so obviously I can't say too, too much, but we looked at if this, then that type of thing, and, um, and so we went with, we, we, I ended up talking based on our conversation as a committee. I talked to Joan Moore and the Uta Serv Director about a number, and we agreed on a number. Um, and so that was the only thing that was sort of not done collaboratively, but it was actually done more collaboratively, because it was done with all five of you. And actually, I don't think Tim was here and I think about it, so, unless you object, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, so I, it, it, uh, it became a little more complic, more complicated than I kind of thought, but I said, uh, if we're gonna do it, let's just, let's do it. So we made change, we, we changed the language in here from sick time to daily, like we did with the teachers. Um, and the only other thing that was in here that I could think of that, that was, would have a price tag to it, um, is there was a, uh, a side agreement that was specific to Jeff and Karen and Joel. Um, and I wouldn't, we talked about it, it's, that makes no sense. There's criteria for how to get that retirement incentive, or not incentive, retirement bonus. And so we just took the names out and just said administrators. Any administrator who meets that criteria is gonna get that retirement bonus. We already have similar language and money for the teachers, and now we have similar language for the administrators as well. So it's about being consistent.
Anything?
I, no, I agree, no, I just thought we shared the discussion.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Anything from any of them? So I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, who, I didn't, who made the motion?
Jim and Tim. Jim and Tim, yeah. And it passed.
The motions come from on that side, okay?
Four to zero.
The tough questions come from all of you.
Joe's the voice of, uh...
It's a fusion of reason.
Pass four to zero. Okay. Any public comments?
Priscilla, you gotta make a speech.
I, I would get my foot in my mouth if I did that, but I do wanna say that I'm excited about this too, Joel, because a, a couple of people who do talk to me regularly have been wanting me to push for a sports complex with a nice covered canopy, uh...
Okay.
Watching area.
Don't?
No, 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 for, for, for observers.
Oh, it's a bleacher.
Yeah, not just a bleacher, but something a little more like a grandstand.
Yes.
And I'm saying, this town will never go for it, this town will never go for it.
Yeah, probably.
So I don't know whether you'll get a grandstand or not, so I'm free.
Yeah, you certainly will be having that discussion. We'd like to have a nice one.
Yeah, that would be very nice. I hadn't thought of that, that's exciting. Um, okay, uh, school committee comments?
No, I just wanna say thank you to Joel and everyone else who was working over the summer, because I know that you're doing, I mean, this list was incredible.
Your comment, yeah.
You really just jumped into this, which is what we knew that you would do, so, thank you, and super excited. It's been really fun also, I love, there, I've been, that summer basketball and summer field hockey have been awesome. So thank you to the coaches that are volunteering their time, and it's cool to see all the camps filling up and things like that as well. Um, so it's just real fun to, to see and watch.
The fifty-one kids that saw the campus.
That's awesome.
That's incredible, seventeen two years ago.
Wow.
I, I wanna, would like to say one more thing too.
Sure.
And that is that, um, I hope that this fall, we can really, uh, get the kids excited about the fact that our town is older than our country. We've been here two hundred and fifty years, which means we've solved a lot of problems over the years. And, um, look forward to, and I'm gonna say it here to you too, because the, the wish from the committee that put together the history book of, uh, Winthrop that was in nineteen seventy-one, said that they wanted, they said to the people of twenty-seventy-one, that they hope they lived in a beautiful world and at peace. We're not doing too well. So let's keep that in mind as we do our planning going forward.
Just a bump in the road, Priscilla.
It's what?
Just a bump in the road.
Yes, a bump.
It's a big bump.
Yeah.
Do you have anything?
I don't have too much to say other than just like appreciate this, this book, like we got to hear about before, we got this, these small little things are appreciative.
Yeah.
And we have that, and I actually have a history book from Winthrop, so, and I did read about this book, that there's a lot of old stuff in here.
Yeah.
There is.
You're looking forward to.
You can read about old teachers.
Somehow I get resurrected every once in a while.
Joe, I wanna debate you.
We do the debate, too.
Joe, any comments?
No, well, just number one, Joel, thank you for the, uh, description today. I sat through the old scenes once a couple of times, and then, as I was sitting here, I was saying that newer members on the board, okay, they haven't had the opportunity to say, how come we still haven't fixed that?
Right, right.
I do think that if you run into a problem with the things with the dormers, that you need all of the doors, somehow they've avoided the community, that there are some individuals that would do that stuff.
Very.
You know, I, I think that's one of the things with this community that we can use batteries to get more of those individuals to find something to do, so. And I'm also excited about the athletic complex, and have been for a long time. I'm not positive that what I envision that you have room for up there on the hill, but I do know, I'm not sure you're gonna cure the Apple Valley issue with the lights and stuff.
Very.
There was such a strong, uh, movement, and those people have really developed, I know when I was campaigning, I spent some time over there. I was amazed, I said, wow, this is a mature place of being now. And a couple of them mentioned the fact that they were still worried that the school would approach upon their life, their lives in some way. So that meaning that, I'd be looking at what's left of the Karpah. I'd be looking at, uh, upon forty-one, where you've got the Somina Farm and some other territory up there, which I've always felt would make a great place, and have an athletic complex. Uh, and so I, I'm sure you're gonna get to that. I do know there's a lot of enthusiasm. I do think the most crucial part of what you're doing is the finance part. But I also think there are alumni and individuals who would give substantially if they're approached to the right way.
Yeah.
I really do believe that.
I agree with you.
And that would be an easier way to get things moving a lot quicker in that manner, so. I'm excited about it, and I, I think the summer's been a good summer. Personally, I'm a little stick in the mud for Mass. I am real worried about what's going on with the, uh, situation we have with COVID and the, uh, divergent, uh, different, different things that are there. I'm particularly worried about the younger kids, and hoping we get a vaccine for those younger kids available to us very shortly here in the fall. But, uh, and I'm also really discouraged that there are just too many people who are ignoring our pleas to get them, say to them, please get vaccinated. Because, you know, what we're seeing right now is, what actually was predicted is that we would go through a good time, and that because we weren't paying attention, all of a sudden we get too many cases going on.
I was happy to see that Jim had put up the announcement about the COVID vaccination pop-up that we'll have at the art show. And I think it's especially the school community, if people haven't been, people will be around that weekend, and hopefully it'll help.
Um, if you're not aware, Priscilla and I are both members of Rotary, uh, as is Andy West, who's a town counselor, and Barbara Alexander, also a town counselor, and we are doing a, what do we call it, pop-up clinic, is what we're doing?
I think that's it.
On the twenty-first.
The word I use.
And, yep, I like it. Um, and, uh, so, you know, we, we, we're gonna just continue to try to find any way possible to try to take advantage of this, of the social groups like Rotary, hopefully if, and our, our thinking is if Rotary and other social groups that people connect with and trust, you know, if they don't trust their doctors, they don't trust the scientists, they don't trust the, all this stuff, maybe they trust their friends, and, uh, you know, they'll go out and do it. You know, I, I'm, I, I'm with you, Joe, I'm, I'm, I'm not as, I'm, I'm optimistic about the whole thing, because I think regardless of what some people think, Maine has done an amazing job of, uh, you know, to have the high percentage of people vaccinated, and, um, hopefully we'll keep plugging away and get, you know, half a percent here and a half a percent there, and eventually, you know, we'll be up even higher. But if the rest of the country makes things be really nervous because they're...
I know little kids, I'm, I have a, a four-year-old grandson who's gonna start kindergarten this year, almost five, obviously. And, but I, I'm also amazed that he has absolutely no problem wearing a mask. Where's your mask, grandma?
I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna go on record, and you'll maybe talk more about it next meeting. Um, I am still a little tiny frustrated that we don't get more recognition for the investments that we've made as, as a school system into our O2 devices and the, um, ARIS, uh, devices that are at the grade school, intermediate wing. Um, I feel very confident, um, that our schools are exceptionally safe for our teachers and our students, and, um, I'm not... and our students, and, um, I'm not at all worried about, about COVID spread in the Winthropian schools in the world before, I don't see it.
I think Maine's almost at the level of vaccination that makes us herd, gives us herd immunity, and I'd like to see Winthrop meet that.
Yeah, so does Joe, you heard about it all the time.
So I guess I'll just echo what everybody else said, and I will add, as far as the sports go, my daughter's participating in soccer at Monmouth, and we are very pleased with that.
Good.
Their coach is fantastic.
He's a good man.
He's a very good man, she's already learning a lot.
Yeah.
Um, so, that's working really well.
Yep.
For our, for our family, anyway.
Wonderful, that's good to hear, because I was kinda nervous.